Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, May 13, 2019. Before we have the roll call this evening, I would like to remind folks who would like to participate in the proceedings tonight that there are speaker request forms in the back of the room, and if you would fill those out, give those to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, she'll get those up, and we will get you on as soon as possible. Again, there is a portion, when we do hit public participation, where if someone would like to speak to an item not on the agenda, they're more than welcome to do that, or they can speak to any item on the agenda either at that point or when we reach that particular item on the agenda. This is a very special night tonight, and to get us started, I'd like to ask our city clerk Lynn Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Stupija.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbit.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Once again, to indicate to those folks who were here at the committee of the whole meeting, Alderman Stupija called me earlier this afternoon, she's not feeling well, and she will not be with us this evening. In a few minutes, we will be having a special proclamation and a special honor following the seating of our newly-elected city council alderman. And part and parcel of that presentation will be recognizing the American Legion, the local American Legion post here in DeKalb. I'd like to ask its commander, Dan Gallagher, Mike Embry, post bugler, Rob McCann, who is the chaplain, Margaret McCann, who is the past commander, and Manuel Olaldi, the junior vice commander, to please come forward and lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Finukin.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbit.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as printed. We now move to public participation, item D under your agenda. Again, this is an area where anyone who would like to speak to any item not on the agenda, or for that matter, any item on the agenda unless they'd like to speak to the item on the agenda at that particular time. We have one person who has indicated he would like to speak to an item not on the agenda, and that's Dwayne Brown.
Yes. First of all, I want to say welcome to the three new aldermen. The city has many challenges, including the need for more economic development, higher-paying industrial and technical jobs, repairing our streets and infrastructure, replacing city vehicles with newer and more efficient ones, lowering the crime rate and the poverty rate, continuing to work on the Antiglidd North proposals, working with Lisa Freeman and the NIU Board of Trustees to increase NIU's enrollment, using TIF funds in a more efficient manner, streamlining the permit process to make it faster and less costly to obtain a permit, repeal the crime-free housing ordinance, which has never worked and only created more problems, have another plan for streets and Safe Streets program, which only causes additional parking restrictions for the residents, form a plan to lower our bar and restaurant and sales tax to make us more competitive with other cities, promote DeKalb as a tourist destination with events at the Egyptian Theater, Convocation Center, fireworks at Hopkins Park, the Kishawaki Symphony Orchestra, Corn Fest, Kite Fest, the Elwood House Museum, Forge Brew House, John O'Mac Orchard, Stagecoach Theater, and the many fine restaurants in the area, among other attractions. The city needs to work closely with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation and Paul Borick to attract more industry. We have the central location, a ready workforce, a great airport, NIU and Kishawaki College, a new public library, excellent police and fire departments, many parks and bike trails, as well as affordable housing. The median home price in DeKalb is $142,300. The council needs to have a positive attitude and never again pass an unbalanced budget. Many of the city's current problems are due to the actions or inactions of former city leaders, such as not building an underpass at Fourth and Lincoln in the 40s and 50s when they had federal and state assistance available, not building parking garages in the downtown area, failing to widen Route 23 to a four-lane between Taylor and Sycamore Road, and increasing our taxes to a point that makes us uncompetitive. I have one thought on redemption I would like to share with you. In life, redemption was walking up the down escalator, stop to congratulate yourself, and back you slide, written by Amy Walden. We have, of all the challenges we have, I think the most important is never pass an unbalanced budget again. We need a proclamation for that, and more economic development. That should be the two major themes. I wish the newer members well and hope the future is very bright. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. That's quite a list. Okay, that was the only speaker who I think would like to speak under this point in the agenda. We now move forward to presentations. Before I call the Honorable Judge Phil Montgomery to the podium, I would like to let you know that we're going to try to choreograph this as best we can. I believe Judge Montgomery that at the completion of swearing in or during the process of swearing in the consul person, that consul's family may want to stand with them, and if that is okay, we will do that. If not, perhaps when the new aldermen are introduced and are formally installed, we will let them introduce members of their family, because this is a very, very big moment, and believe me, I appreciate so many people stepping up and running for election as alderman of the city of DeKalb. As Judge Montgomery swears in the four aldermen, we have three new aldermen and one returning alderman, Alderman Favor, we would ask that person to come up to the dais, take their seat. The present alderman in that role will take the nameplate of the new alderman, will attach it up here, and will then take their nameplate to do whatever they'd like to with it. So, the Honorable Judge Phil Montgomery, if you'd come up, please, and our first person to swear in is our first ward alderman, Carolyn Morris. Why don't we just go to the -- once you have a seat, we'll move to Tracy Smith, our third ward alderman. Tracy?
I, Tracy Smith.
I, Tracy Smith.
Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Three, being elected to the alderman of Ward Three, in the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities. Thank you, sir.
Joyce is not here, so I get to do the honor.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities. Thank you, sir.
Joyce is not here, so I get to do the honor.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you, sir.
Joyce is not here, so I get to do the honor.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. To the best of my ability. To the best of my abilities. Thank you, sir.
Joyce is not here, so I get to do the honor.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. To the best of my ability.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. To the best of my ability.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams. Having been elected to the position of alderman of Ward Five, in the city of DeKalb. In the city of DeKalb. County of DeKalb. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of aldermen. To the best of my ability.
Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams. Okay, our next alderman to be sworn in is our new fifth ward alderman, Scott McAdams.
Mike Embry to make a few comments in just a moment after I present this to the commander of the American Legion post, Dan Gallagher. American Veterans Month, May 2019. I Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as American Veterans Month in the City of DeKalb and honor Commander Daniel Gallagher for his service to the DeKalb County veterans. Dan, if you'd come up, I'd like to give you this certificate, this proclamation. And Mike, if you would head on up to the podium, I'd like you to make a comment as it relates to a program that we're going to be unveiling in the City of DeKalb. Dan, come up and get this. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, Mr. Embry, you have a program that you're going to announce in coordination with our American Legion, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. First of all, I would like to thank our city manager, Bill Nicholas, and our Public Works Director for helping out with the project. Last year, we were challenged by one of our Legion members that we had no American flags downtown. And then we got another challenge from another Legion member that maybe we need to honor some veterans downtown. So with that, we took on a project called DeKalb Hometown Heroes. And our goal with DeKalb Hometown Heroes is to honor both veterans and current service members who have families tied to the DeKalb area. We're exceptionally excited to do this. We will be programming Locust Street will become our kind of honorary Veterans Way. We'll have a variety of banners that will be dedicated to several local veterans and local service members, as well as service flags we'll be putting on that. So we're really excited about that. Again, Bill, thank you very much for all your help and support. And Andy, I don't know if Andy is here at all, we want to thank. But we're really excited. Our very first banner is one of our prominent citizens here in the City of DeKalb. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to show you our very first banner.
Young Staff Sergeant Jerry Smith. That was 12 pounds ago.
Who is that young kid up there, huh?
Jerry, I want to thank you and then your council too for all your support in really making DeKalb, Illinois a veteran-friendly city. It's very, very important to us. And again, thanks to Dan Gallagher and all the Legion members for what we've done and trying to do. And so, thank you very much.
Well, I certainly didn't know this was coming, Mike, but I appreciate it. And, you know, I can't wait to be able to walk from First Street at Locust to Fourth Street on Locust and see banners like this of folks who have served their country. Many, many are obviously still with us, some may not be. But, you know, it was an honor to serve in the U.S. Army. I was talking to Carolyn, who is a veteran of the Marines. And I was discharged from the Army, and I think maybe when that picture was taken 50 years ago this month. It was 1969.
It was like yesterday, Jerry Falls. And how many American Legion members do we have in the audience? I know we have Gene over here, we have Calvin over here, Jerry, others. We have some others back here. Thank you very much for your service and thank you for everybody supporting our veterans. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Okay, we move right along. Item number three on the presentations tonight, and Diana Holst from the DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau will come forward to give her annual report on our human services funding received by the, from the City of DeKalb.
Thank you very much, Mayor Smith. And thank you again for your continued support of DeKalb County Youth Service Bureau. Already like 50 years ago, we're talking about 50 years ago, we started out as a division of the City of DeKalb, grassroots efforts from police and educators and family members who are really concerned about teenagers, you know, taking a wrong path. Branched off in 1971 as one of the first initial youth services bureaus in the whole state. And now we serve all of DeKalb County. Each year, we serve about 30 to 60 percent of our clients are from the City of DeKalb. From March of 2018 to March of 2019, we served over 700 City of DeKalb residents. We provide a continuum of early intervention and therapeutic supports for youth ages eight to 18 and their families. We have trauma-certified bilingual and school-based services so that way we break down barriers, make sure that people are able to get the services that we need, that they need. We don't turn anybody away for inability to pay as well. We have the only alternative to suspension program in the county, so that way if a kid has to serve an out-of-school suspension instead of staying home unsupervised, potentially, they come to us and we do assessments, we do interventions, we kind of find out, you know, what are their issues going on, what are their triggers? And then we provide them with the tools and the skills so that they can make those wiser choices and improve their functioning in the school. And this program, we've been able to serve 32 students that are from the DeKalb School District this past school year or this current school year. And we found with the students that come, we really are able to reach kids that might not otherwise have reached out for support. We found kids that are, you know, struggling with some significant home life issues, kids that are suffering extreme bullying. We've also found kids that have past traumatic experiences that they've never disclosed to anyone else before and that they're just really struggling to cope with. And all these different things are improved, are, you know, really impacting the functioning of the kids in the schools. Likewise, we have a program that we work with the court services. Again, we're working with juvenile first-time offenders. And same thing, we're finding that there's a lot of underlying issues that are going on underneath that's leading kids to do things that are getting them to be arrested. So instead of having, you know, court involvement, these kids come to YSB, we do an assessment, and we give them a program. It could be working on early intervention for drug and alcohol, anger management, individual counseling. We help them get connected with community services when that is something that they are required to do. So that way, we get them back on track. With the, our partnership with the juvenile court services, they've done the statistics to show that the kids who go through the early risk assessment project have a less than 5 percent recidivism rate as opposed to about a 20 percent national average for first-time juvenile offenders. So this is a program that really works and is really helping with those police initiatives to reduce juvenile crime. We've also been honored to work with the DeKalb Police on the Compass Program. We've actually had families that have called YSB when they got those, that first initial letter about the Compass Program to engage in services. And then we had our first second-level meeting in March, and that was a very, very productive meeting with the families and with other service providers, with, with the schools, and of course with the police and what they can provide and information that they can give to the families. We also have the only youth crisis program that is for youth that have run away or have been locked out of their home in DeKalb County. So if, you know, youth has been picked up by the DeKalb Police, we come, we can, doesn't matter what time of the day it is, we have a 24-hour, seven-day, all around the, all year-round response to that police department. And then we are working with that family to try to rectify whatever is the conflict that's going on to lead to the kid running away or the family locking the kid out. We've had eight families that we've served from the City of DeKalb this year so far. And we've also provided transportation for some youth that were not from this county but were picked up in DeKalb too as well. So if you think about it, those are eight families from DeKalb. We are able to provide not only that crisis intervention to, but after the initial crisis was over, we helped stabilize those families to keep them intact. And that is our goal. Our goal is to, you know, keep families intact, to keep youth out of the juvenile justice system, and empower the youth to achieve. Our biggest program is our youth and family counseling, and our counselors are very skilled at engaging teenagers, which you probably all know is kind of a difficult age to work with, and really getting them, not only just the youth, but the families involved too as well, because that's key there. Oftentimes, we found that it's not just a kid issue, you know, there's a family and a systemic issue too as well, so we're able to help support those families. We've provided our counseling in the schools, in both middle schools here in DeKalb. And we've also do, we have 12 hours a week that we are at Kishawaki Education Consortium, which as you know, also serves students that are from the DeKalb School District as well as other school districts too. So we're really breaking down barriers for families who might not be able to bring their youth to YSB, or sometimes parents who might not be as engaged in the process, or sometimes it's just the single mom who's working two jobs. It's just, you know, at the end of the day, there's just no other time to get anything else done. So we provide the services to bring it to them. We're also able to do our empowerment groups in those schools, as well as at Founders Elementary School as well. We can't do all these programs without support, especially not without support from the City of DeKalb. And we're always very grateful for that, especially with our, with our building and the great support you guys have given us with that, especially during this cold winter when we had our pipes burst and you guys came and fixed it right away. So that was awesome. One of our families, they wrote on the satisfaction survey this past year, they said, "We can't thank YSB enough for the incredible support they have provided our family. At times, it seemed impossible, but YSB gave us hope and reassurance." And that, that thank you actually goes out to the City of DeKalb, because without your support, we couldn't do this as well.
Thank you, Diana. Are there any questions or comments on this annual report from Youth Service Bureau? If not, we thank you very much. Thank you for all you do in our community.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we move right along. Item F on your agenda, appointments. We can either do this in one vote, an omnibus vote to the council. I have three appointments tonight, one reappointment and two appointments. Anybody from the council object to an omnibus fashion?
We appoint all, approve all three appointments at once.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve all in one vote of the council. Roll call.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Now, I'd like to have a motion to approve the reappointment of Joyce Topezja to the Police Pension Board for the completion of a two-year term through May 31, 2020. You may recall that Joyce had to resign from that particular post on which she was serving when I appointed her as acting third ward alderman last fall. So I would ask for her reappointment to the Police Pension Board. I'd ask for your appointment of Steve Honeywell to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31, 2020. And I would like to ask for your approval of the appointment of Grant Goltz to the Economic Development Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31, 2021. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we appoint the two individuals and the reappointment of the other in omnibus fashion. Any discussion? Roll call.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Those appointments are approved. Now we move to the consent agenda. Again, all items listed on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion unless an item is requested to be removed from the consent agenda. Do I have any request to remove any of the consent agenda items from the agenda? If not, let me read that agenda. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 22, 2019. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through May 13, 2019, in the amount of $3,371,686.06. Number three, investment and bank balance summary through February 2019. Four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through February 2019. Five, human services funding first-quarter report. Six, minutes of the joint review board meeting of January 25, 2019. Seven, minutes of the joint review board meeting of February 1, 2019. And eight, minutes of the joint review board meeting of February 15, 2019. I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call. That was Alderman Verbic, yes, right, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko. Oops, sorry, McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. What I'm going to have to get used to is when he says "Smith," you know? So we'll work through that, I'm sure.
Well, we can, we could find another way of doing it, anything that makes sense here?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I think, again, we'll work through that. So the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, so let's move on to considerations. Number I, Roman numeral I. Number one, consideration of a request by Barb City Manor, Inc. to extend the current lease from the City of DeKalb. And again, this is not an action item, it's a discussion item, and I would like, I know someone would like to speak to this, yes. Maureen Garrity. This is for consideration of a request by Barb City Manor to extend the current lease with the City of DeKalb. Maureen?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Smith and city council members, city staff, and members of the community. I'm, my name is Maureen Garrity, and I'm the current administrator of Barb City Manor. And I am here representing the residents, staff, and board of directors of Barb City Manor Retirement Home. I won't review the information that city, city staff provided for you. I didn't want to regurgitate what you already had in place, but I just wanted to say on behalf of all of our resident staff and board of directors that we are truly grateful for our partnership with the City of DeKalb. When our doors opened in 1979, who would have guessed that 40 years later, the retirement home would still be operating in the historic public hospital building? I'm not sure, I mean, it was a leap of faith on the part of the entire community, and I really don't know what people thought would happen in the next couple of years, let alone the next 40 years. Barb City Manor, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit governed by a volunteer board of directors. Our mission is to provide a safe and affordable home for low-to-moderate-income seniors who are no longer able to live alone. We are the only non-medical senior living community in the area that provides three meals a day and staff on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Our residents remain active and independent, and the amenities we provide allow them to age in place. Our day-to-day operations are fully funded by resident rents, and it is truly a privilege to be entrusted with the care of the senior citizens of our community. Our other mission is to preserve the DeKalb Public Hospital Building for future generations. The Joseph F. Glidden Hospital opened in 1921, and the Jacob F. Heisch Edition opened in 1961. It is a big, beautiful building, and it is solidly built. It is the safest place to be during severe weather and probably in any sort of disaster. Over the years, and with the help of TIF funding from the city, we have made capital improvements to the building while striving to maintain its historic integrity. The importance of the city's help in achieving this goal cannot be overstated, and there is an accounting of the projects that were funded since 2010. It's included in your meeting documents. The Barb City Manor, Inc. staff and board of directors take great pride in both of our missions, and we appreciate the excellent support we receive from the citizens of DeKalb, the city council, and city staff that allows us to operate a unique home for our senior citizens in a wonderful community setting. Thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration of our partnership going forward. Thank you. Any questions?
Alderman Fagan.
I just want to say that of all the agreements we have regarding TIF, contracts, leases, this is probably the best thing we've got going. Really, it is. I get a lot of people that call me and, and support for Barb City Manor. I've been in there many times. And it's a needed area for people that, you know, in their transition, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And I guess, you know, what, it's coming to us is, we've always relied on TIF for money for you, and then now that's going away.
It is.
And what's a board looking at? I mean, what is, what would the board like to see?
I think you've got three options in your...
I see the three options, I read that.
I, I do believe that the board's preference, if this is a possibility, would be to renew the lease for a mutually agreed term, which is item B, number B. And working with the city to discover a funding source. So I, I believe that is what we would, we would like.
With B, I was kind of wondering, I mean, would it eventually go to, the building go to you, or do you, or does the board feel that they're not ready to take that, have that responsibility?
That would be A or C.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So B, B would not be including having us be the building owner.
Right, I'm just thinking years down the road, you know, but, okay, I'm getting your point.
Well, the, the, B is a lease agreement for a certain number of years, and then, of course, we would revisit what the future would hold.
All right, well, thank you.
We're going to have more discussion by the city council here, but we also have two people who would like to speak, and then I want our city manager to reiterate perhaps, not only from what he's heard tonight, but what he's presented to us. So thank you, Maureen.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker on Barb City Manor is Taryn Thaden.
I respectfully...
Okay.
...don't be talking. I will just say I am the fourth president of the City of DeKalb County. I am really dedicated to this, this organization.
Thank you, Taryn. Eva Ray? You are not going to speak at this point? Maureen said it all, perhaps? Okay, very good. All right, well, let's turn it over then to our city manager, Bill Nicholas, who I'm sure has some thoughts on it. Andy, you should have gotten that in before.
Well, I was eating supper.
Yeah. You've said that before to me, come on. Why don't you come over here, Andy, if you would? This is Andy Anderson from the fourth ward. No, I'm just kidding you. We respect your opinion, but as, what did I say to you when I saw you earlier today? I said, "Keep it..."
Keep it short.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Want to welcome the new, new members of the board. And just a reminder that the money you're spending out there isn't coming from the lottery or some gambling device of the state. It's coming out of the people's back pockets, in yours. So be cautious on how you spend it. Well, my mother went into Barb City, I think in 96 or 97. Took us a while to pry her loose from the house, but all we had to do was go out the front door and go 300 feet north to the front door of Barb City. And she was there, I think, two or three years, and then my brother took her out to Utah and put her in a, in another home out there similar to Barb City. But it is a great thing for the elderly here, here in town. I had a lot of friends that have lived there, some for quite a few years and some of them for a shorter period of time. And I'd like to see things continue on with Barb City, just like they have for the last, well, 40 years that I've known about it. And anyway, I would, I would suggest that you do extend their, their lease or whatever it is. I'd hate to see it get to the point where it was like the other hospital on the north side of town, because I lived in the neighborhood, grew up in the neighborhood there, and I, I think it's one of the better things the city has ever done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Anderson from the fourth ward. Thank you, Andy. Okay, Bill, do you have anything to say? Our city manager, Bill Nicholas.
Just a few things.
Sure.
First of all, congratulations to the Barb City Manor for 40 years of enlightened administration, thanks to the board, many of whom are in the audience tonight, and officers of the board, and, and the administrat, and the management of one of our prime assets. Maureen did a very good job in presenting some of the history and some of the issues. I'm just going to, for the sake of people watching tonight and for some in the audience who don't know Barb City very well, just say a few things about the content of the lease, and then run through the three options that were referenced here. In our lease, there are reciprocal responsibilities and some unique responsibilities. Barb City Manor has, for all those 40 years, maintained public liability insurance and other insurances. They have met our rooming house requirements for health and safety, always been very cooperative. They keep the premises in good order, always have, and they also hold the city harmless against any claims for a failure, which hasn't happened, but the potential for failure to comply with our lease conditions. They perform all maintenance and repairs costing less than $10,000 per activity, per repair. And also, the first $10,000 of any maintenance or repair cost that we know is going to cost more than $10,000. If it looks like it's going to cost more than $10,000, they've always notified us, and that's the intent of the lease. The City of DeKalb also maintains a variety of insurance policies, but most especially against fire and property damage, as landlords do. Our maximum contribution for any annual maintenance or repair work is $100,000 a year. And it's important to note that any portion of that $100,000 under our current lease and for leases that have existed since the 90s, that annual contribution can be rolled over if it's not spent. So here's where we stand, as I mentioned in the background, in the current budget, which would be spending the, the last increment from TIF II in 2019, we had a budget of $147,000. The carryover that's been unspent is an additional $101,129. So the total available city monies that are, that are out there for Barb City Manor are So the three options that I suggested, and there may be others as, as conversation, or maybe hybrids of any one of these. One is, in our conversation, we've called it the, if you had all or nothing, this is a nothing. The current lease expires, the obligated funds are, are put in escrow for use by Barb City Manor going forward on TIF-eligible projects, and the facility is, is transferred to Barb City Manor Board for a dollar. The item B, which Maureen referenced, would call for the renewal of the lease for a mutually agreed term. As the owner of the property, the city would, would need to find a capital funding source now that TIF II is in the process of unwinding. The third option would be to, as an alternative to A and B, would be to work out a transition lease of, say, three to five years that involves a slowly diminishing allocation from some city capital fund is not, as yet not defined, after which Barb City Manor would come into ownership of the asset. That is my background report, and I'm happy to answer any questions as you discuss this.
And again, this, along with a number of other items on tonight's agenda, is for discussion, but I think, I think... discussion, but I think, I think city manager Nicholas wants some direction.
And I should mention that the current lease expires on June 30th.
Okay. Now, so I'll turn it over to anybody who would like to make any comment. Alderman Fagan has already opined, and Alderman Fanouken.
Thank you. You know, I've been in town the whole 40 years, and I haven't seen where the lease, the current lease or earlier versions of it have caused any real problems for the city. It's been a very wonderful asset. I have to say upfront that my wife's sister is living there now, and it's been a very good experience for my wife and I, and I think for my sister-in-law too, for the most part, right, Maureen? But I think they perform a valuable service, and I would like to see the lease extended at this point, and that gives us some options as we move along to try and find some other funding sources as we, you know, get out past the next two years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts? I have one. My problem with option B, frankly, is that we're going to have to find a capital funding source for the reasonable and customary repairs. Perhaps that is attainable, and if so, and if it's the wish of this council that we move forward with what apparently the board of Barb City Manor wants, I'm certainly comfortable with it. But as is the case with so many things, I'm thinking now of the unfunded mandates that we get from this state that the city has to pay for. That gives me a little bit of pause. Item B. For item C, we could still do a transition lease of, let's say, five years, where during that five-year period, with the option of renewing the lease at the end of that five years, that we put and we ask the board of the Barb City Manor to work with the city and work with others on a marketing plan where this facility becomes more responsible for raising the funds that it needs. So let me just throw this out. Year one, the city makes a grant of $50,000. Year two, 40. Year three, 30. So that by the end of year five, we have depleted the end of that five-year lease. We have worked very, very hard to enable Barb City Manor to work with us in putting together a plan, a marketing plan, if you will, that will help Barb City Manor to raise its own capital, raise its own money. So that's a plan that I thought might make some sense, but again, I would like some other discussion tonight. Alderman Fagan.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. You can't really, I wouldn't want to rely on City of DeKalb for funds. I really wouldn't. I mean, you have to be self-sustaining. We have all the other nonprofits in town that have learned to raise money. I'm sure Barb City can. We do have, what is it, 200 and some thousand that's in...
241.
Yeah. So we're close to 350 on this for the next couple of years. I'd be willing to look at that, and whatever City of DeKalb resources that they can use for this fundraising, I'm all for. And, but I can't see them totally, I mean, might not have the money one year, and they might need it.
Any other thoughts?
I guess I agree. I think that's...
Okay. From now on, if you just sort of raise your hand or throw your hand up or something, so I know that it's you. Alderman Morris.
I hear what you guys are saying. I think that sounds, that makes a lot of sense, and, you know, maybe they can do something like spend some money to hire a grant writer, you know, and with a five-year period to sort of plan to work toward that solvency, maybe that would be good.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Faber.
Yeah, I would, I like your suggestion. My concern was the $100,000 year-over-year payment, the fact that it, any unused funds are available the following year, that would, I mean, going forward, we couldn't do that. Yours drops it immediately to 50,000. So I'm, I could negotiate either way with either limiting, you know, starting at 100 with no carryover and limiting it at that point, or starting at 50,000, I think.
Yeah, the 50,000 was sort of a figure that I pulled out, given the fact that there is some substantive funding still there, you know, funds still there, so...
Exactly.
And again, a sliding scale puts the onus on everybody, the city and Barb City Manager, to work very, very hard, but gives a source of funding, which I think in that, whether that be a five-year period or a 10-year period or whatever, gives us some time to work together. You know what I hear tonight is there's clear consensus. We want Barb City Manor to continue its role, continue the very effective role in this community. It's just that how are we going to fund it? How are we going to make sure that the board of Barb City Manor, the residents of Barb City Manor, and this council are comfortable going forward? We've got the sustainability to make it work. Alderman Morris.
I think one thing to note, too, with this is that if we were to choose to do something like you're suggesting, that doesn't mean that they still can't request TIF funds in the future, correct?
It won't.
If, uh-huh.
It won't be in the TIF.
Probably, there may not be TIF funds at that point.
It won't be in the district, right, right. Okay, okay.
Right. I think what we, what, as a matter of historical, over the last year or two, it was pretty clear that the TIF availability just was not going to be there, so that $100,000 grant was not going to be, you know, ad infinitum. So whether or not TIF dollars would be available in three, four, or five years, we don't know. Alderman Fanouken.
Well, I think in light of the discussion we've just had, I think I'd like to give consideration to allowing the city manager to negotiate with the Barb City Manor Board. I think we've kind of set the parameters of where we would like to go and see if we can't come up within the next month a workable agreement. I realize we're only technically six weeks out from the end of the lease, and not to put anything else on your plate, Bill, but I think that is something that we could do to work forward from this point. So I think that's probably a doable solution.
Does that, does that give you clear, more clear direction? City manager Nicholas. Alderman Verbic.
And then looking at the budget moving forward, right now with the way our budget stands, what do we give up to fund this? We have no room that I'm aware of, and, you know, looking at the budget, I'm not sure. It'll be a decision on us as to what we give up to make this funding happen.
Right. You know, whether we look at existing human service funding or, again, work with Barb City Manor to obtain some grants.
Right, right. Good. I think this was a good discussion, clear consensus, pretty clear consensus, so thank you. Again, with number two, this is our second consideration, again, as a discussion item, consideration of a joint review board recommendation to consider the early termination of tax increment financing district number one. I've had nobody from the audience indicate a desire to speak to that, so I'm going to turn it over immediately to our city manager, Bill Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor, and we're looking for some consensus here. Again, this will be a theme through the next considerations as well. The joint review board that had three special meetings in January and early February and met for its first quarterly meeting, has now, has reconstituted just a couple of weeks ago, has been talking about the possibility of a unique action, but the council hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in here, so I thought it was more than time to raise this. So you know from the background that TIF III, which was under a lot of conversation and discussion back in the late fall, early winter, is, in many cases, the blanket that goes over TIF I, because it was not approved until after the first of the year, it's just accruing increment this year, the first payouts from the TIF III will be in 2020. TIF I is still operating on those parcels where TIF III is lingering. TIF III is much smaller than TIF I. It's about a seventh the size. There are 300 parcels in TIF III as the council approved it, and a little over 2,000 in TIF I. And that's just background for the conversation, which, one of several conversations which last fall and the winter focused on, should there be a surplus agreement that attends TIF III as is one for TIF I? 50% of all the annual increment, not just what's left over, but all the increment in TIF I is surplus to the other taxing bodies, and the city also gets a share of that surplus. The problem with carrying that forward to TIF III, and the JRB members were aware of this, with a smaller TIF and the likelihood that annual increment, particularly in the early years, would not pass maybe 400,000, whereas right now, the annual increment in TIF III, or TIF I, is about 7 million. The problem is that there wouldn't be enough for larger TIF projects, and the council's identified its interest in trying to support projects that will return more increment and ultimately more tax dollars to all the local taxing bodies. In January, a new idea arose in those conversations, and that was based on an analysis of what TIF III's engine would produce in its 20-some years and what is being produced by TIF I in just one year or maybe two years. So the proposition before the joint review board, and ultimately got consensus from the joint review board, was a sort of a swap. The value of 16 years of potential surplus from TIF III is equal to the value of one year of surplus from TIF I. So why not cut the last year of TIF I out? TIF I is to end on 2022. If it ends on 2021, then the other taxing bodies would get the value of 16-plus years right up front and could then use that money as they please on TIF-related projects, not TIF-related, but anything they wanted to use it for. And that gathered a lot of interest and support. In fact, the JRB consensus was to recommend that. So I bring it to you. This is your first hearing on it. It comes with my recommendation. I have led that conversation in the joint review board meetings, and our staff supports this as well. I think you could say it was unanimous opinion on the part of the joint review board, and the mayor's attended all those meetings, and others have too. A little bit of a chart is in your background that shows what I just tried to describe in words. If you're so direct, we would line up the necessary steps it would take to amend the TIF I adopting ordinances and bring it back to the council, so, but I invite your opinion and thoughts on this.
Thank you. Okay, thoughts on this? So basically, what we're asking is if this council concurs with the JRB consensus, we could take, not tonight, but we could take the necessary steps to amend the TIF I redevelopment plan to formalize the estimated completion date of December of 2021, not 2022. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any comments? Alderman Verbic.
We've got a lot of excellent TIF discussion, but do we have any timing on the audit? We've invested in an audit. My hesitation on everything is tied to this audit. What will the results be? Will it compel the city of DeKalb to honor some obligation? I think there's just a lot of unsure issues that could lie ahead. Where are we at with timing on the audit, and how could we be responsible with what that outcome could be coupled with these decisions we have in front of us?
A quick report on the audit. The TIF forensic audit has not begun yet. It's, that's something that, at the county's insistence and your pleasure, it was agreed that the county work out the contract with the firm that is to do the audit. They are still reviewing those contracts, I believe. I haven't been asked to sign for the city as yet. We are not unhappy it hasn't started yet because we just came through our own financial audit. We have a couple of people who are available to do our own audit, annual audit, standard regular audit, and that's, the field work is just now done. So we're ready to help and support and bring boxes and provide files, digital or otherwise, as needed for 10 years of the TIF program from 2008, excuse me, 2009 through 2018. But the audit, and I can't prejudge or preclude what will happen here, what we suspect the audit will show is not that other taxing bodies were shorted and that the obligation, as you point out, a potential obligation would need to be fulfilled, and having the funding would be an issue. But I think it will show that our record-keeping is not as sharp as it needed to be, and as we started anew on January 1st at the JRB's insistence and with the JRB's support and with the council's support to go about business differently, to be more transparent. The accounting now, we just did an accounting of the first quarter for the JRB at their meeting in April, is to their satisfaction, and, but that's now, and that wasn't 10 years ago, probably. But I can't, I haven't personally gone through 10 years of this, so I'm only speculating here.
Has anybody given us any idea of the length of time a forensic audit will involve, will take?
Well, it'll depend, of course, on the amount of records we have.
Sure.
I think it could take between three and six months.
Now, let's say it takes six months outside, okay? Would we still be able to amend the redevelopment plan to do what it is that you're recommending that we do here?
We can, we can. I think it would be important to know before the end of this year and before TIF III starts paying out where we want to go with this proposition. So here it is, it's May, almost mid-May. I think, I think we'll have to give you a regular status report on what we're finding, and that will depend on the pleasure of the auditors. Auditors don't usually give you a scorecard on a monthly basis, so it's something, we'll see a rough audit at that point when they've gone through all the records, so...
Well, where I'm going with this is...
Yeah, I can see where you're going with it.
I, I'm going with it. Let's say it takes six months, best case or worst-case scenario, depending on your vantage point, and I just want to make sure that if, in fact, it is an audit that will leave us little liability cash-wise, Alderman Verbic, would you then be comfortable with the consensus here on the redevelopment of the TIF I if, in fact, the forensic audit is such that it's fairly, I hate to use the word clean, but I will for lack of a better term. Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, and our governing bodies agree that...
Right, right.
We're not liable for misspent funds. My hesitation with any conversation about projects or ending something early is that unknown. Will we, will results come back? Will we, will results come back and say, now we're obligated to pay back millions of dollars? And then where do we get it?
Any other comments? Any other comments, city manager? Are you looking for, are you looking for something, are you looking for some more strong consensus on this tonight? Or is moving this forward a couple of months satisfactory? And be candid, please.
Mr. Mayor.
So procedurally, this is how it could work. Let me just put this out there, and then we can see how you want to go. Let's say the council said, let's try this. So the money that we would get eventually from this allocation with all the other taxing bodies would be dumped into the general fund, right? I guess you could put that in escrow. You wouldn't have lost any of it. But it still begs the question how much, if any, will be owed for unforeseen obligations.
And that amount that would be there would be about $350,000, the 347, 728?
Yes.
Okay. That would be the city's share of whatever surplus, if you will, is given to the other taxing districts. Tony, did you have something? Did I see your hand go up?
It did. I was just going to say, I was in agreement with going ahead with the plan as recommended by the JRB and the city manager.
Does there seem to be consensus on that? Okay, you've got your consensus. We'll move forward. Keep in mind, though, that the concern of Alderman Verbic might be the concern of others.
So the council consensus is to proceed as the JRB recommended?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number three under discussion items, consideration of a request from John Pappas for tax increment financing assistance to redevelop the properties at 204 North Forest Street and 423/420 Oak Street, formerly, we call the Mooney Property. No one has indicated an interest to speak on that item, so once again, Bill Nicholas, our city manager.
Thank you. Well, there's some considerable background here.
Yes.
I'm not going to repeat all of it, but some points, I think, they're stating. First, why we're talking about this, Mr. Pappas has, that's me, sorry, sorry, in the control room. Mr. Pappas has presented us with a conceptual development plan for what we've been calling the Mooney Property. We'll eventually have to call it something else. And it's up there on the screen for you. That's the conceptual aerial and plot plan. We also have some floor plans for you to see as we go through this. As you know, the building has been vacant for over 10 years. The property has not been used productively for that period of time. Been a lot of speculation about what will happen. Going back to 2013, there was a five-year downtown redevelopment plan identified the Mooney Property, the library and the Egyptian as being centers of redevelopment, interestingly. I guess it was prescient at the time. Of course, we already knew the library was going to expand, but we didn't know what was going to happen on the Mooney Property. So it's been in the public domain for a long time that something needs to be done and maybe ought to be done there. So Mr. Pappas proposes to raise the former dealership buildings. There are a number of environmental problems there, which he proposes to mitigate, construct two 56,000-square-foot buildings with a mix of commercial, retail, and residential uses. The residential uses will be on the second floor and up, and the commercial on the first floor. There would also be some ancillary uses, such as hospitality rooms, fitness centers, outdoor terraces, and the like. The estimated project cost at this point, a preliminary cost, is approaching $14 million. The TIF request was $3 million. The time to completion is estimated to be two and a half years. The particular project proposal here is raising, of course, the question about how would the TIF funding occur? And I've proposed in the background a dedication of about $2,075,000 to the redevelopment project in this current fiscal year for the purpose of funding environmental remediation, demolition, footing removal. There's a lot of gas and electrical infrastructure coursing through there that has to be rationalized again, storm and sanitary sewer again, sort of coursing through an area that's been in some kind of use since the mid-19th century, so there's a lot of underground infrastructure that has to be rebuilt or reformed. A lot of engineering and surveying, a lot of soft costs and so forth. The other part of the $3 million is, would be a performance-related part, and that is that the developers proposed that as each building is completed, then an additional $462,500 would be paid, and the completion would be recognized in the form of a final occupancy certificate. So they may not happen at the same time, very likely they'll happen in sequence, so that may take us out a number of years. So the total would be $3 million. So is this an investment that we can trust? Is this likely to happen? And the council has been very concerned about identifying through an analysis of the developer's financials and past experience, the capacity to complete a project of this scope. I've had an opportunity to look at the financials. I was not at liberty to present them all to you and the public tonight, but I was able to draw some ratios, which I think explain the potential for success here. And in addition, this particular developer has had a track record for us to look at in our community. So I went to some extent, this is a lot longer than my usual background, to show you what has happened at Cornerstone and then also was proposed at the Mooney Property. And at the Cornerstone project, which is now fully leased, the actual renting took less than 12 months. It was projected to take 18 months. The developer missed that early fall, late summer, early fall renting period in our community, which is in line with a lot of the changeover in leases, but still made a very strong finish in the spring. The operating margin for that large project was 64%. So what does that mean? That means that after all the expenses and the bank debt are calculated, in any given year, or certainly this year and going forward, now that leases are churning revenue, 64% of the revenue is available to offset unforeseen vacancy issues. If the bottom fell out of the rental market, there'd still be the largest part of the revenue that had accrued available for that. That's an extraordinary, that's nearly a two-to-one ratio in relation to the expense side of the calculation. The debt service coverage is extraordinary, and that's determined, as I pointed out in my background, by dividing the net operating income by debt service. Banks prefer a ratio of 1.25%. The debt service coverage is 1.63%, and that's authenticated by the financials that I've I think, then, as we turn to Cornerstone, we also have to look at the relative, as we look at Mooney, excuse me, the relative sizes and scope of the two projects. We thought Cornerstone was big, but Cornerstone occupies less than an acre of land, 0.78 acres. And the Mooney parcels together comprise about three acres. The total leasable space in Cornerstone, 50,000 square feet. The proposed total leasable space in the Mooney Buildings, 112,000 square feet. So a considerably larger project. The request, then, is this, that the city, I'm going to leave my notes in a minute here because they're not doing me any good. The city council considered tonight directing the staff to proceed with the creation of a preliminary development agreement in cooperation with the developer, bring that back to you with a scope and a funding proposal like I have outlined for you, and let you consider that, let the community weigh in. We brought it to you as a consideration because we wanted you to have a chance to talk about and also to raise public interest in this project. We're excited by the proposition of redevelopment of that site. I don't know that you saw the floor plans. Jeff, can you hear me in the back? If you can put those up.
We didn't load those up.
Okay, good. All right. I've been talking and not looking. Thank you. So, yeah, if we want, yeah. That's the elevation. So Jeff, put the floor plans back up, please.
The floor plans weren't in the slides. They're in the council's packets.
Oh, all right, okay.
I'm going to score a few of them.
We don't, we don't do the back and forth?
Yeah, we don't do the back and forth here. If you want to speak to the item, you'd have to come up and, otherwise, we're just, it's a free-for-all. We just can't, we can't.
That's, that's all I have to...
Okay. So now I think what I'd like to see is for council comment and discussion, we have a pretty clear recommendation from our city manager that we recommend that the staff and legal counsel provide a preliminary agreement, development agreement for the council's review. Comments? Alderman, favor?
So I would, I would be in agreement with this, with the recommendation to move forward. The thing that I'm really, you know, I'm happy to see is that the percentage that the city is going to be giving to this project is considerably less than on the last project, on other projects that we funded. And this is what our hope was in making a lot of these investments downtown, as we said in the beginning, the, you know, we would, we would give out a little more money, but as more projects came downtown, that money, that percentage would drop, and that's, that's what's happening. I think this would be, you know, with the calculations of projected EAV, which, again, are projections, they're not fact, but I think this is a smart investment for the city of DeKalb to invest in. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Alderman Morris.
I have a handful of questions. Just briefly, this is a short one, easy one, will these ones be furnished?
Will we have option?
Option, he says, okay. Okay, next question, do we have a range of square feet?
I think that's, the square footage has been identified for us for general discussion, but I don't know if there's any flexibility in that. Maybe we could ask Mr. Pappas to address...
John, would you like to come up to the, it appears we're going to have some, at least a few questions from Alderman for John Pappas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The square footage on the one bedrooms would be around 850 to 900 square feet. The two bedrooms would be anywhere between 1,200 and 1,300 square feet.
The next question that I have, I'm not sure if this is for you, Mr. Pappas, but is it legally feasible, per TIF's parameters, for Mr. Pappas to complete his project and then later request TIF reimbursement for those TIF-eligible expenses?
I don't believe so. The upfront cost here is extraordinary because we're contemplating funding the demolition, the excavation of a lot of infrastructure, the soft costs that go with mitigation, the environmental and so forth. So the reason it sat there for 10 years is because now that those issues are known, the asbestos in the building and the fuel tank and so forth, no one's wanted to touch it without some kind of incentive.
Can I, so I know that you've already stated that the occupancy of Cornerstone is at 100%?
Yes.
And so I don't want to suggest that your word is insufficient evidence, but I have heard repeatedly from community members that are questioning the validity of that. And so I just want to bring their question to the public and mention that out loud. Is there any, you know, is there anything that you can do to demonstrate the validity of that? I don't question it personally, but I'm just saying I've heard that a lot.
Carolyn, I've seen the rent roll. I'll take an oath if that's necessary. I don't know if Mr. Pappas wants people to come and look over my shoulder or not, but that's, you know, the people who are living there are, have a right to some privacy.
Of course, right.
So we're not going to publish that in the newspaper.
Alderman Morris, it is a deal. This is a private development with private funds. Our bankers are happy. They're financing the second project, and now they're interested in financing the Mooney Property. I'm not the smartest guy on the planet, but I would be pretty stupid if I wasn't 100% full and turning down six to seven residents a day to proceed with the third project. That's, so whoever doesn't believe us they're fully leased, that's their problem. We have zero responsibility to do any more explaining. If the city manager, the members of the council, and the mayor, I'd be more than happy to meet with them, and we can discuss. This is not a public type of development. This is a private development that we have obligations to the lenders, and we meet those obligations monthly in a professional manner.
Alderman Noriko. Oh, boy.
She will be mad.
When I see a hand to my left go up, it's Alderman Noriko. I'm sorry, Scott. Alderman McCandless.
I have two issues. The first one, at the JRB, there was a discussion about portability from TIF II to TIF III, and I overheard details, and I'd like you to speak to, that there's three years to spend that money. Is that correct?
Yeah. So money from TIF I can be ported into TIF III?
Okay.
Yes.
And then that money is available for us to spend for up to 36 months? Is that correct?
It would be. We have enough years left in TIF I.
Okay, and then my second point is not really a question, but more of a point. If the public is going to be financing any portion of the project, the public will be wanting to speak out on the project. So while I appreciate that it is a private project, it's obviously in the public's interest. When I took over the position, I was told, spend it like you earned it, not spend it like we gave it to you. And so as an obligation to the taxpayers, I feel it's important that we talk about these things. I also have heard that the project at Cornerstone is not full, and so I would be much more comfortable going forward if we had some sort of reassurance.
Hold on a second. Reinsurance of what?
Of the, that it's full.
I provided the rent roll to the city manager and the mayor. Will you want to publish it in the Chronicle?
No, no. Obviously, today, tonight is my first night. I haven't seen that yet. I'd be, I'd be much more comfortable going forward if I could see it.
Alderman Verbic.
We're planning on porting $1 million from TIF III. What if TIF III has negative EAV? What if we're not accumulating dollars enough to... What if we're not accumulating dollars enough to provide for that obligation?
Well, there are two things can be done. I'll get to the portability, but TIF III will be generating some increments. It's gathering increment right now, and then TIF I could port some money to TIF III. It can't have negative EAV entirely. It's got a wealth of EAV. That's the power of it right now. It can't, if it was eviscerated, we'd have a lot more problems. We would close up. We'd be, we'd be done as a city. Because it's such a large, it's 3,000 parcels and a major commercial retail area of the town. So could there be a down? You know, we saw a big slump in the market today. We lived through the Great Recession. Even with that, the TIF engine was going. It was not at third gear, but second gear maybe. It was still generating incremental revenue. So I think maybe to the, there are a couple of points here, legitimate points, and I appreciate some people will never trust an appointed city manager. So I can sit with any Alderman who is concerned about my integrity and sit there and show you what I've got in terms of the rent roll, trusting that you will see what I've seen, and then I will, I will put it back in my folder. But I owe that to the developer. I owe it to the people who live there, not to make copies and distribute them and so forth. But I'm happy to do that. And then I hope you'll say, city manager was true. He was right. But this is important for the public and for the council and for everybody to know. So we're looking right now at an undeveloped, formerly developed, but vacant property with an EAV. Here's the problem with EAV. EAV of just under $300,000. It generated in 2018, $35,563 in property taxes. The two buildings were built, and this is a very conservative estimate of their valuation. The EAV will generate a total property tax of $400,868. $400,868, that's 11 times the EAV now. And if you really want to be conservative, cut it in half, five and a half times. I mean, there will not be another development of this size and power for the life of TIF III or for the remaining life of TIF I. If we walk away from this because there's some speculation, it's not founded, I don't know what the TIF program is really going to end up doing for us. We've walked away from a lot of projects over the last 20 years. We've surplus 50% of it for anything other taxing bodies want to use it for. Personnel, anything. Here's a chance to invest in a project that has somebody willing to take the risk and investors in tow that are willing to take the risk with him. So there hasn't been anybody to step up in 10 years. I recommend that we proceed with this.
Early on in the meeting, and Carolyn, I know you want to speak, we had Dwayne Brown, who speaks frequently here at our city council meetings, and he said the very same thing. We have turned down things because we have, again, erred on the side of caution. And let me put it this way. When we hired Bill Nicholas, we didn't hire him to blow smoke. And your background, Bill, was superb. I mean, to do that due diligence on the project. So I just want you to know that I take your word. You put it on paper, you take that pledge or whatever it was. I believe you, Bill. And so that's very important. Tonight, we are looking at a discussion item to simply give consensus to a preliminary agreement. We're not voting on, you know, moving forward with the project formally. We have not voted. We will not vote tonight. So what our city manager is saying to us, I think, is here's the information. I've done the best job we can. We've given you the drawings. We've given you the floor plans. We've given you, you know, what it looks like. And here's the chance to take a property that has sat there and done nothing but gathered dust for the last 10 years approximately. And now we have an opportunity. So I guess what Bill is asking for is simply, has he given us enough to say, as Tony suggests, that we move forward with this? Alderman Morris and then Alderman Smith.
One quick, easy question.
Yeah, please.
What is the price range you're anticipating on these? The rent?
$1,200 to $1,500 a month.
And then the next and last question I have is, I'm not sure how to address Mr. Bill Nicholas, but if you would, sir, could you clarify for me? I've heard from lots of people, and I've heard you already address this, but I would like a little clarification. It sounds like people think, from what I've heard in the community, that the timelines weren't met on Cornerstone. However, the way that you described it, it sounded as if they were ahead of time. And so I guess if I understand you correctly, then I think it's probably important, moving forward, to be very clear with the community about what our anticipated timelines are so that we don't have unmet expectations that create a perception of failure.
I guess I'd have to know what the concerns are that you're hearing too, but, so I can't address speculation, but what I can say is, so the place opened in less than a year. It's fully rented. It's, you know, it's a major, there are a lot of persons who have developed rental property and don't have 100% occupancy after many years and never have. So I think this is a tremendous achievement in a downtown that's still reviving and so forth. It's a commitment, not just by the developer, but by the people who have moved in there to say, you know, I think I can live downtown. I can, I can enjoy this. And that's a great thing. So in less than a year, that's, that's, that's pretty remarkable. The announced timeline was back when the project was being discussed, and I wasn't here, but in the notes I read, it was about 18 months, so well ahead of time.
Alderman Smith.
Mr. Papas, just a couple of quick questions, maybe for staff. Environmental issues. Have you been in the building? I know how, I've been in town long enough to know how long that building's been there.
They have some issues.
Okay.
The environmental report is about 500 pages. We've been in contacts. The bank hired environmental firm. They did phase one, they did phase two. There's some several issues internally from the building and in the corner back in the late '60s, early '70s. It used to be a guest station right across from the St. Mary's Church. So there's a couple of tanks there also. The best-case scenario, it's about $270,000. Worst-case scenario, it can be up to $600,000 to $700,000. That's the long and the short of it.
Perfect. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Alderman McAdams and then Alderman Faver.
There was discussion, you and I met at the Cornerstone project, and you had discussed with me, one interesting factoid was that 35% of the TIF money is subject to state and federal taxes?
There's no question about that.
So that pencils out roughly, if we give you $3 million, then $1 million of that goes to Springfield and Washington, D.C. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to give you an example, Elwood Steak and Fish House, when it used to be a small furniture store, was $328,000 worth of TIF. That project was a seven-year deal. It got paid back in four years due to success of the steakhouse and the property tax from $24,000 up to $82,000 a year. The city attorney released the second mortgage that the city had on, and that trickled, that tripped the income tax. So out of the $328,000, we had to pay 35% tax, which was about $110,000.
Alderman Faver.
So one question for you or the city manager, and then a statement or a comment. So I heard storage tanks, and you reiterated it again, are we going to be, is the project going to be seeking the Illinois Leaking Underground Storage Tank Fund to remediate? Or is that not, is that only municipalities are able to access that grant?
We have not more fully explored the applicability of the LUS fund here. The two tanks in question are relatively small in size, and the phase-two environmental found any contamination near them is very limited. The contamination relates more to the building itself and some of the mechanical operations and underground hoists that are in the building. These tanks were also non-revenue producing tanks, so I don't know if they're eligible for the LUS fund or not, but again, they're a very small component of the site remediation.
Alderman Fanouk.
I wanted to make, excuse me. The other statement I wanted to make is, you know, as, when I came on board as a council member and working with the former council members that just left, one of the things that we had done is we did have, as Alderman Jacobson wants to return us to, is a strategic meeting, and we talked about what would we be spending TIF monies on. And the agreement that the former members of council had is we would be spending this money on transformative projects for the community. We weren't going to paint facades anymore. We weren't going to put banners on buildings anymore. We were going to change the city of DeKalb. And the projects that Mr. Papas has done, the projects that he's proposing, the projects that the people have come to DeKalb to do, these are transformative projects. These are investments that are going to return tax dollars to our community. These are the projects that make sense to do in our community. And there are a lot of negative people who want to complain that they didn't get any of this money, or they didn't get a share of this or that. And again, I'll say it, if you have a project, if you have a project that is worthwhile, we would love to hear your project. We'd love to review it with you, and I'd love to support every project. We don't have enough money to do that, but I would love to support other projects. This is a fantastic project. It's going to be very transformative to this area of downtown DeKalb. It's going to make a huge impact. Thank you very much for bringing this forward.
There is a communications major who graduated from NIU with his master's degree on Saturday. He's from Texas. I don't know his name. I met his family today at the Lincoln Inn. They were having lunch. And Bill McMahon was there, introduced me, said, hey, the mayor's here. They said, we can really tell a lot is happening in your downtown area. Because they could only, all they had to do is look next door at the brew house, and I see the owner is back there, wave your hand. What's happening across the street? The bricks are there, or?
Jammer's going to open Wednesday morning.
Yeah, Jammer's opening.
Five out of, four out of the five salon suites are fully leased.
Right. Yeah, I wasn't soliciting your comments, John, as much as I was saying that people are noticing. And, you know, I said to those folks, I said, I hope you come back in a year because it's really going to be much more different than what it is here in 2019. Alderman Fanouk.
Tony, so a little my thunder. I was going to say that, you know, John has one very successful project already completed. The other one, you know, after the winter, now the work has begun again there and it's moving along. And, you know, it's not like we have a line of developers wanting to come in. John has done a number of successful.
I'm the only crazy on the left.
John has done a number of successful projects in the city, and I would support us moving forward to go from this point. Like I said, he's made a lot of development opportunities, not just in DeKalb, but in Sycamore too over the years, and I think that it's worthwhile moving forward on this and get going on some more development.
Alderman Verbig.
And yes, I'm not one that is concerned about your capacity. I've seen the results. They are outstanding. I'm concerned with our capacity to follow through on our obligation. Again, I mentioned the audit earlier. We really need the results of that audit, I believe, before we make this kind of commitment. TIF I is a sizable TIF, and I appreciate your comment that there's been many years that folks could come to us with properties to say, what can we do to help? It's not happened, so thank you for being willing and trusting in the city of DeKalb to make it happen. But now, how can we get this audit finished up so that we can consider these projects to go forward with, not just this, but also we have others requesting projects?
Would you concur with the consensus of this council, if in fact that is a consensus tonight, to, at this point, move forward with the preliminary development agreement on this?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear.
Sure.
Any other comments? Well, Bill, I think you have the consensus, the consensus that we move ahead with the preliminary development agreement and for the council's review. Thank you, John, for your participation. And Alderman Fagan recused himself because he is doing business with Mr. Papas. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Number four, consideration of a request from Safe Passage for tax increment financing assistance to demolish the former DeKalb clinic at 217 Franklin Street and relocate a neighborhood sewer main. Again, this is a discussion item, but our city manager would like some consensus from council if possible. Bill?
Yes, and as I mentioned in my background, Safe Passage is a not-for-profit, 501(c)(3) corporation, and it has, the board has approached city staff with interest in some TIF assistance for two specific things. One, to raise what used to be known as the DeKalb Clinic over on Franklin Street, and to help with the relocation cost for a sanitary main that runs down the middle of the original building. The clinic was actually remodeled and added on to at one point. But you can see by the exhibit that's up there, there's a little arrow that points to the line, so it's running north and south, right through the heart of that old original clinic building. Incredible that it is, I have to say. But there it is. And it's not the building sewer, it's a regional sewer. It starts to the north and then eventually flows a little bit to the west, and I won't get into that. So we have seen a, an estimate from, at this point, just to establish the general magnitude of numbers, from a local excavator does a lot of excavation in this area, it's about $118,000. And I talked to Mark Eddington, who's the executive director of the Kichwaki Water Reclamation District, and he had put the relocation of that sewer at about $200,000, a little bit more than that. So the $300,000 is probably a conservative number for the two together. So that's what's before you. Now, I hasten to add, clearly, we've been talking about projects, we've been talking about private redevelopment, we've been talking about ways to build tax increment by building EAV and so forth, and as I mentioned, this would be a tax-exempt agency that has made the request. The value in this case is the removal of some lighting characteristics that were part of the original script for TIF I, underground infrastructure that is either failing or is, needs to be rationalized in a more productive way, and also the demolition of vacant buildings. This building's been vacant for nearly a decade. In terms, it's not been vacant, but it's not had a profitable reuse for nearly a decade. So that's what's before you. I propose that we gain a little. I propose that we gain a little more information before I bring this back to you, and I believe that's agreeable to the board of Safe Passage. So I just ask that we bring this back maybe in 90 or 120 days, and at that point, we should have more plans so you can see what is anticipated for the site. There is some background here, which I think will be helpful to you in the meantime, to look at pertaining to what Safe Passage does, the number of people they serve, and their value to our law enforcement agencies, to the local hospital and so forth. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I hope...
Okay. So you're not looking for any recommendation tonight, or...
What I'm asking is, what I've pointed out in the background, that we bring this back to you. And if you have any questions at this point, that would be helpful to the board at Safe Passage.
Alderman Fagan.
I got a couple of questions, Bill. Where are they going to move that line to? I mean, how are they going to move that? It looks like a straight distance between two points.
No, it isn't. The reason for the cost, I attended the last monthly board meeting of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, I'm tempted to say sanitary district. Off the top of that exhibit is where it would be jogging to the west rather than running south. So they're basically going to get over to Second Street, run down the Second Street right-of-way to Second and Franklin, and then go west down Franklin.
And does Safe Passage have any idea on what their future plans are for the plan? You know, on, for us moving that? The other question is, we tore down that building and just left it the way it was, have them work around it, is that a possibility also?
Well, and there are members present here might want to speak to that, we have had that conversation. It is possible to design around it, and there was an initial design that took into account the location of the sewer. And it was to leave the parking on the east side and build the building. That does not, that's not as flexible for the uses that they had hoped to incorporate into the building. And the most recent thing I've seen is more of an L shape that would cross that, the line of where that north-south sewer is running. But as I mentioned in my background, they're still working out some design considerations. I think you should see the design that they like, bring that forward to you, and if that's agreeable.
Yeah, that is what I like to see. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this consideration? Alderman Verbi.
So through the purchase of the property, we have, the city owns a lot of available property as well. Was there consideration for sale of city property for a dollar, perhaps on a parcel that did not need a tear-down or a sewer line work? In other words, this initial cost, could these initial costs be avoided by helping Safe Passage locate on property that would not need this kind of work?
In the not-too-distant future, the council will be asked to consider the 26 properties that we own. Not one of them is exactly right. And Safe Passage has grown and served in a number of buildings in a block that, for so many years, has not been exactly right. And this is, they're looking for an opportunity to consolidate, to have shelter services, training services, educational services, administration, all in one spot rather than multiple buildings and so forth. So nothing we have is exactly right. The only site that's actually cleared right now of the size that they need is Protanos, which has an environmental issue.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay. Again, I think there's some consensus here that we, we're comfortable at this point in moving forward on that. Okay, we have one other item tonight for discussion only. And that is downtown pianos. Mike Embry is seeking the council's permission for an encroachment permit to allow for the random placement of two multicolored upright pianos on sidewalks near the intersections of Lincoln Highway and Second Street, and Lincoln Highway and Third Street. Mike Embry is here, I'm going to let, city manager Nicholas, I'm going to let Mr. Embry speak to this item, and then I'm going to have you tune into this, okay?
First of all, thank you for allowing me to be, that's okay. Last summer I was in Fort Collins, Colorado, home of Colorado State University, and while visiting there downtown, I saw a variety of these pianos that you see here on the pictures. And a friend of mine said, well, you play, why don't you start playing? Which I started playing, and all of a sudden, I had 12 people standing around me, and I said, well, this is just two-way cool. And don't leave, John Pappas, I'm going to talk about you right now, don't you leave. My thought is something, when I saw, I said, you know what, this would be a great option for our downtown area. When people visit our local restaurants, and I know Mr. Pappas has two new restaurants coming in, you know, you get in your car and you go home. But what if you walked out of Eduardo's and you saw somebody playing? These are working pianos, by the way, from the audience, these are actually working pianos. They're covered with a polyurethane paint, and then the artist does the rendering, and then re-coated with polyester paint. It was just so intriguing to see this. It is a piece of art, we've seen McAlves in Chicago, we've seen our dogs here in town. I thought, well, this is, it accomplishes two things, it's music and it's art. I approached Brad, he's an old woodworker, so he and I batted heads right away about how this would work. I'm a musician, he's a woodworker, so we have to kind of come to a, we'd like several of them downtown, four or five, as the town starts to grow and clean up. But we thought we'd start with this project, and so we'd be the first ones to have it, or if somebody else got this idea. And it would be something that we'd start May 1st, take down by end of October, so it would not be there for the winter. We would have to, you know, work all the details out, we'd put it in an area that would be accessible, so the people could walk and have some fun. And I could see people playing the piano, having a little combo performing. It is an enhancement, it's artwork. So I know, Bill, I have a lot of details to work out about insurance and how to affix it to a stationary item, but I think this would be just kind of a cool effect. And we put this out on Facebook just for, to get the feedback. And we had over 3,000 hits in less than 20 hours, and nine artists volunteered to paint. So it's a concept, it's something that we can do positive for our downtown area, it doesn't cost the city anything, I have a bank that's already willing to pay for one of the pianos being painted and tuned. I'll get other sponsors, and my goal is eventually have a nonprofit that will take over this project, continue for the city for years to come.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Alderman, our city manager Nicholas.
This might be tougher than the TIF conversation. I'll say this, the idea, and I thank Mike for bringing forward a creative idea, we're trying to bring foot traffic to the downtown and make the downtown more of a destination for people looking for some entertainment. And so, you know, you check all those boxes. As Mike knows and the mayor knows, I wasn't worried about the idea, just because I think in Fort Collins with the mass of, you know, it's much more populous and with the volume of people in the downtown area, and I've only been there once, but it's a happening place, something like this, you almost need to keep people there. And we're trying to bring people down, so I think it's a council decision, I'm happy to do whatever the council wants to do, and I can work with Mike if the council so directs.
Well, we want to try. I mean, and something that we can do, and we are building new restaurants downtown, we are building a new brewery downtown. So we want to enhance our downtown, so people say, this is a cool downtown, we've got the banners up, we've got the things happening downtown. It's a concept.
Okay, let's open it up for questions. Alderman Fagan.
So you're speaking my language, no cost to the city, I love it. But no, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's a fantastic idea, I think getting started with a couple in, you know, again, some key locations along Lincoln Highway, or, you know, in the park or whatever, I think is fantastic. I say give it a try and see what comes of it, yeah.
Alderman Morris.
Why not? I mean, this sounds like a lot of fun. Oh, you're going to tell me why not?
Alderman Fagan.
Absolutely, why not? I mean, this is something that doesn't cost us anything. If Mike was able to see this, bring it to us. And you know, what's the worst thing that's going to happen? What's the worst thing? We go over, we say, ah, you know what, it's not happening, pick up your pianos. It's, you know, I mean, am I right, Mike?
Absolutely, and I told Bill that, if it doesn't work, I'm going to be the first one to say, I'm at fault, blame me, I will take it to the burn pile, and we'll have a musical burn pile.
Right. But, I mean, we're up here all the time dealing with controversial issues, there's no controversy here that I can think of.
Can I make the first request if you play, Pat?
No.
Alderman Verbi.
Fun idea, thank you for bringing this to us. We have great soundproofing, I know, at Cornerstone and Plaza DeKalb, but what about the other residents downtown if Mike Verbi decides to sit down at 3:00 in the morning and bang out whatever I prefer?
I've heard you play, we don't have to worry about that. No, I mean, we have a noise audience in our community, and like anything else, I mean, you can have loud people on the side. These pianos aren't that loud, these aren't like electric pianos. These are really concert, old concert pianos. And the decibel is, in our terminology, and I know Gene Lowry would know, understand, the decibel level is really low. You're going to have more noise from passerby than you would from this.
Have we given any thought of where you're going to put these first two?
I'm going to work with Bill and try to find, you know, we want to make sure that, we need it by restaurants, so when people walk out, there's something for them to do to stay in town. You know, we don't want to hide them, you know, we want them available to be seen and be a visual positive for our community. What happened when it rains? First of all, they're covered polyurethane, second of all, there is a plastic tarp, you can see behind there, there's a plastic tarp that they put over in Fort Collins, and I know Bill thinks they're a little more classy than we are here in DeKalb. But they actually, the citizens walk by, put it over, they're respectful, these are quality pieces of artwork, and people put the covers on them. And I've actually seen police department, police officers there in Fort Collins just take a stop and put a cover on it, and it's respect, it's a positive thing, it's a clean positive thing.
Alderman Morris.
I think the only concern would be just ADA concerns with the sidewalks, and that's the only thing I can think of that's, and I'm sure you guys would cover that.
Yeah, we'll be discussing and making sure it doesn't inhibit ADA or it's going to be in anybody's way, or offend a storefront owner. We're going to be really cautious about that.
Well, from what I hear, this council's saying is, let's try it, let's do it.
Appreciate it.
Bill, you get that consensus? Okay.
I'll be the first person to sing along with you, Mike.
And I've heard you sing, so we'll skip that, but thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, let's move on to item J under our agenda tonight, resolutions. The first is Resolution 2019-075, approving a liquor production liquor license for Byers Brewery LLC, 230 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbi. Unless there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak to that, I don't have any forms. City manager Nicholas.
The owners waited a long time for this moment, I applaud the initiative, hooray for DeKalb's downtown.
Any comment or questions? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbi.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. And Alderman Fagan has returned. Are you in favor of this resolution approving the liquor production liquor license?
Absolutely.
Absolutely good. So the total tally, Lynn, is?
Would be eight i.
Thank you. Resolution passes, thank you. Number two, Resolution 2019-076, approving a hospitality liquor license for Family Fund Center LLC, doing business as Mason Indoor Golf, 1500 Sycamore Road, with supplemental licensure for video gaming. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City manager Nicholas.
Likewise, I'll be brief, we've seen this coming for, this is the fourth council meeting that we've had, we've known what the end game was for several months, we support it, it's met the requirements, and be happy for the council to support this as well.
Good. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbi.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
Motion passes, thank you. Number three, Resolution 2019-077, authorizing an architectural improvement program grant to the DeKalb Area Women's Center in the amount of $3,250. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbi, seconded by Alderman Fagan. City manager Nicholas.
Yes, we do have a modest architectural improvement program, it does deal with facades, but this isn't our current budget, and we've had this for a number of years. It's for those smaller things that help existing businesses, sometimes not-for-profits, continue to do what they do in a more enhanced appearance. We have three tiers, as you know, for the funding. In this case, the petitioner is the DeKalb Area Women's Center. They are looking to paint their building on Market Street, their price, the lowest of the bids that I saw was 13,000, the reimbursement is at the 25% threshold, which in this case would be $3,250. To date, we have spent 19,000 from that budget on two projects, this would be the third. There are a couple others lining up right now, seeing it go away, and they all seem to be legitimate, too. I think the council supported some good projects, I think this is one of them, I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbi.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
Motion passes, thank you. Number four, Resolution 2019-078, authorizing an online agreement with Google Transit for trip planning capabilities. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you. Kudos to Marcus Cox, who is our coordinator for Transit at the city of DeKalb. This is an app that would be available free of charge, so people at our new bus stations or shelters, I should say, not stations, would be able to know if the bus is running on time, is the bus, are they in the right route and so forth. I think it's a great idea, and thanks, Dan, for coming up with it, we need your support. It's an online agreement with Google Transit.
Any questions or comments on that? Roll call.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbi.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Motion passes, thank you. Number five, Resolution 2019-079, approving a nonprofit special event liquor license for the 2019 Corn Fest. Motion, please.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
City clerk.
Mayor Smith, I didn't get your vote on that last resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And that means eight i.
Motion passes, thank you. You need to keep me in line, okay? Okay, Resolution 2019-079, approving a nonprofit special event liquor license for the 2019 Corn Fest. Alderman Fagan has recused himself, I need a motion on this, please.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Morris has moved, Alderman McAdams has seconded, Alderman, and then finally... Alderman Morris has moved, Alderman McAdams has seconded, Alderman, and then finally, uh, City Manager Nicholas.
Uh, we, the council's never failed to approve this.
Right.
Uh, I, I, I can't imagine what would fall on your head if you weren't gonna allow beer to wash down the corn. So, uh, I recommend your approval strongly.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith. Mayor Smith.
Yes.
That would be seven i.
Thank you. Okay, now we move to ordinances' second reading, they're on this evening. We do have several ordinances, a couple here for first reading. The first one, Ordinance 2019-038, Amending Chapter 38 Intoxicating Liquors, Section 38.27(c)(8) Gambling Devices, by revising the fixed number of liquor licenses for establishments that qualify as video gaming establishments, to include the properties located at 110-124 East Hillcrest Drive and 1704 Sycamore Road. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith, and City Manager Nicholas, would you like to speak to this item, please?
Yeah, uh, this is truly a who's-on-first type of thing. Uh, we were gonna put Abbott and Costello up on the screen, but I didn't know at this point in the meeting, that would be funny. So, um, I, uh, I just want to simplify this, and Dan Olson has helped me with this over three days to sort this through. The, uh, what's before you tonight is, is, here's the lay of the land. There, there are ten, um, right now, ten, uh, vendors, uh, who have been considered at one time or another. You have, you have permitted ten. There was some fallout, now we have some back. Uh, the two that you're looking at tonight, Lacy's and Fanatico's, they're in different stages. They have to go through a, a planning zoning route, and then there's also the licensure route. And so, what we're asking for is to, um, revise back the, the fixed number of liquor licenses for such establishments. You will end up with ten. No more, no less. So, we recommend the approval of this. And I'd rather not go into any more detail, if I want to get more confusing.
So, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second on this. Alderman Fagan, did you have a, a question?
Yeah. All right, so, we move the shelves around.
Yeah.
And we come out.
Come out with the same number.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
New man.
You're right.
Sure.
Alderman Favor.
Yeah, I'm normally not a supporter of the video gaming. Um, I think I've made that pretty clear through different meetings, but, again, I, because it's remaining at ten, um, I can go ahead, I guess, and, and vote in the affirmative. Um, again, I, I'm hoping to bring other businesses to DeKalb to generate revenue other than through, uh, video gaming.
Thank you. Now, if we approve this, we're authorizing the owners of Fanatico's and Lacy's to work through the approval process, right?
Correct.
Uh, and ultimately then return to the council for final approval for any special use permits. So, I would suspect that what we would want to do is if this first motion passes, that we would want to waive second reading?
Correct.
Would that be correct? Okay, first of all, let's vote on the original, uh, motion, uh, on this resolution. Uh, roll call.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
Can I make a motion to waive the second reading?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make the motion to waive the second reading for this.
And approve?
Approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Fanoukun, that we waive second reading and approve this, uh, ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
Motion passes, thank you. Our ordinance, our, our, our final, uh, action item tonight is Ordinance 2019-039, Amending Chapter 51 Traffic, Schedule C Parking Prohibited, Schedule E Limited Parking, Schedule F Limited Parking Central Business District, and repealing Schedule K Reserved Parking Stalls as they pertain to on-street and public lot parking in downtown DeKalb. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alderman Verbic, and to this, I'm going to ask City Manager Nicholas to address.
Well, uh, we hope we have been faithful to the direction we got from the council on March 25th. So, these ordinances, uh, basically replicate that guidance, and, uh, I've identified the three areas in particular in which, uh, there will be changes, both in our parking lots and on-street. And, uh, then there are some tables attached to this and, online and, and your background to show how that actually gets spelled out in, in law, local law. Uh, I want to thank Commander Woodruff for, uh, leading the, the review. There are others who are involved in this, and, uh, if the council will approve, which is what we're hoping for, then we'll proceed to do the necessary signage and, and time for this, uh, to take effect in about ten days or so.
Any discussion of this request in this motion? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
Motion passes on first reading. Would, uh, I'd entertain a motion to waive second reading on this. So moved. It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by?
I'll do the second.
Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
Motion passes. This city council has proved its metal tonight in discussing. Thank you very, very much, I really appreciate it. Okay, let's go to reports and communications. This allows our council members, uh, the mayor and the city manager to make any, uh, comments, reports, whatever, and we'll start with our first ward, Alderman Carolyn Morris.
Nothing to report.
Okay, nothing to report tonight, okay. Alderman Fanoukun.
Well, I would just, uh, only like to welcome the new members of the city council, and hopefully they'll find this to be, uh, as a productive activity as I have over the last six years.
Thank you. Alderman Smith.
Uh, the only thing is, our, new, new emails are active on the city account, if anybody needs to get ahold of us in one, um, from one, three, and five, so, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Alderman Fagan.
Uh, they will, by the way.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Alderman McAdams.
I'm not sure that mine is active yet.
I beg your pardon?
I'm not sure that mine is active yet.
Okay. But they will be, I'm sure. Alderman McAdams.
I would like to remind everyone that at 9:30 this Saturday at the former Protonos site, there will be the first step in remediation and cleanup, and please come out and join us to help, uh, start cleaning up the environment.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic.
Congratulations to our graduating DeKalb High School seniors, uh, coming up on May 25th, and the sixth ward is pleased to know that, uh, nearly 150,000 people will be driving through the sixth ward to attend different various high school commencement programs at the Convocation Centers. We look forward to welcoming, uh, all of those people to the city of DeKalb.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Favor.
So, this, uh, this Saturday is the first urban challenge for DeKalb, and it's gonna start at the, uh, Elwood Visitor Center. From one to three, check-ins at 12:30, there'll be, it's kinda like a scavenger hunt, and you have a team, and you run around. They're gonna be in downtown DeKalb as well, so if you have nothing else to do, or after you help clean up down on South Fourth Street, you want a little more exercise, you can go to the Elwood House at, uh, 1 o'clock.
Okay, my report would be relatively short. You may have noticed that I have a light bulb here, and a baseball in front of me. Uh, last weekend, I enjoyed the Glidden Homestead, uh, ceremony, finally getting electricity into the barn. Um, and they had a ceremony, and the barn is still undergoing restoration. I enjoyed throwing out the first pitch at the NIU Ball State ballgame. This week, I'll have the pleasure to join Sycamore Mayor Kurt Lang as we officially welcome MetroNet into our communities. We'll both be scooping ice cream for Kish Hospitals Employee Appreciation Day, and we'll also be tossing the coin at the DeKalb United Soccer Match on Friday night. Now, I bring these up, not only to acknowledge how very much I enjoy the wealth of opportunities like these, but on this special council evening, I thank our departing Alderman Jacobson, Stapigia, Norrico, for the time they've taken out of their busy schedules to appear at many meetings and ceremonial, uh, undertakings. For our new Alderman, Morris, Smith, McAdams, along with our veteran, Tony Favor, I'd encourage you to see as much of your community as possible, as you can during these next four years. I guarantee that you'll get many invitations to do just that. For tonight, though, plan to stay in this building as another responsibility, something we call Executive Session awaits you. So, welcome to the DeKalb City Council. Thank you. City Clerk Fazikas.
Oh, uh, just one item of lost and found. Um, there was a charger and, uh, cord that was left here last month during one of the meetings, in actually this general vicinity. So, if anybody is missing one, looks like it might be a laptop, uh, that kind of device, uh, see me.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Nicholas.
No report.
Okay, we are now, uh, asked to recess to do Executive Session. I'd like to read the following exemptions. Number one, personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(1). Number two, purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(5). And three, pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(11). I'd ask council for a motion to hold the Executive Session.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch whether you, uh, listed all four of the items tonight, or only three?
Well, my agenda says three, let's see if I?
Right, there was a fourth, uh, fourth request added.
And what was that?
Um, that would be sale or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(6).
He said that.
No, I, we, I think we said purchase or lease of real property, which is?
I said le, yeah, purchase is?
C5.
Lease of real property.
Those would be two separate.
So, that was the C5 and then the C6?
That's correct.
So, we'll be doing that. So, do I, uh, will that motion and second be okay on that?
I, I, I'm sorry, I need to hear the, who made the motion.
Alderman Favor made the motion, Alderman McAdams made the second. To recess now and go into Executive Session.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Furbick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight i.
We are, we are now in recess for Executive Session. Thank you very much.